Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. As for attendance to be taken, please.
Thank you. Mary Edie.
Present.
Reeve Eamon.
Present.
Councillor Coolis.
Present.
Councillor Evans.
Present.
Councillor Hines. Councillor Jamison.
Present.
Councillor Sidney.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a call, Mary Edie.
Thank you. Any declarations of punitive interest on the general nature thereof? I read none. We'll get on to the first motion. The Rennford Town Council deem the caboose located at O'Grine Road, a masked road intersection to be surplus to the needs of the municipality and dispensed in a safe way, safe and reasonable manner following receipt and evaluation of offers from the community. I'm over, please. Councillor Jamison, second by. Councillor Coolis. Okay, I guess. Comments and questions? Councillor Hines.
Thank you, Your Worship. The first thing that I want to address is that this certainly is a committee of the whole, so it gives us an opportunity to discuss this, thank you, this matter. And at the regular council meeting of June 14th, Councillor Coolis had asked that the certificate in regard to the insurance be provided. And I, we did reach out to the Elite Company, and they did provide the insurance certificate. And I did provide that to Clerk Wellmer, who maybe could speak to that in regard to his review of it. So just wanted to let you know that.
Yes, certainly. So as Councillor Hines mentioned, a certificate of insurance was provided by Elite Environmental. It was passed on to our insurer through our commercial account executive yesterday with Brokerlink. And they have reviewed and have confirmed that it does demonstrate a liability amount of $5 million, including pollution, and does list the town adequately as an additional insured with a 30-day notice of cancellation. So notwithstanding any specific language that we would require, it looks like it's certainly suffice and aligns properly with what liability coverage we'd be looking for for a project of this nature.
Okay, that's really good to know because that was a huge stumbling block for a lot of us, or like a lot, a lot of the conversation around this. But, so yeah, it's interesting, like, I still would prefer, I still, I still would like to sell this, sell the caboose. And I think there's an opportunity where we can actually find the right buyer, and it may be a couple of local people, whether they're from your committee or whatever, who would be interested in purchasing the caboose. Because I think, over time, I don't really want this to become a tax burden on the taxpayers. And I, again, like, I, I was, I'm still concerned about the whole lead thing. And the biggest thing for me is the accessibility of it. It can't be made accessible. And I just don't think it's, I don't think it's in our best interest to hang on to it. I think it's, again, I would really like to see us sell it. We did have, when we talked about this prior to a couple of months ago or whatever, Director Hill did put, put a request out there. He did get some offers. I'd like to revisit those offers and see what they were so that we would have an idea of how much we could expect to sell this for, if we wanted to go with one of those offers. That's my personal opinion. I still think, I still, as much as I love the fact that, you know, Councillor Hines has put together this report, and she's done a lot of work on saving the caboose, I think we can save the caboose for all of Ranfru and without us being on the hook financially and having to deal with the accessibility.
I, I echo the sentiments of Councillor Jamison. There are a couple of things. The accessibility is a concern. We're dealing with painting this caboose. From all the indications on these reports, these multiple-page reports I've got now, we're not doing anything with the interior of it. We can't access the interior as of 2025, which is the legislation the province has put forth to us municipalities in government-owned facilities. Again, it's still going to be our responsibility to deal with it as, as the so-called Save the Caboose Committee ages and disperses over time. Guess who is on the hook for maintenance on this caboose? That being said, the whole way this thing came to be was a little, was a little bit of an ambush in the sense that it was added to a finance committee meeting at the last minute and then very quickly discussed and then tabled, with $30,000 left in the budget to be dispensed over two years on this caboose. Here we are tonight, a year and a bit later, making a decision about this, about this, this asset. We have offers on the table to remove it, restore it at the buyer's expense, and probably make it available for people to see and look at and whatever, much the same as this report from Councillor Jamison on Smith Falls' use of their three cabooses in their, in their railroad town. I really am not, I'm not in favor of doing this work and then, and then it's all done and it looks pretty and all that stuff, and then four or five years later, where are we then? And it starts to bleed rust again, we're back at it. The other thing, too, that I think we need to remember is that Director Hill got estimates for us, a few estimates for us in the past two years or three years, all ranging in the almost $100,000 range. And all of a sudden, we can do this for $35,000 or $36,000. That, that, that sets off some alarms for me, at one-third the cost. I, I, I really don't know, was somebody gouging us here or? And then, in this report that Councillor Hines put forth, there is a request here for a loan. I believe I read that someplace, I can't see it now. A loan of $30,000 to the Save the Caboose Committee or group, or whatever they call themselves, from the town of Ranfru. And I, I have a real issue with that because the town's not a bank and the town doesn't lend money to a group, to a group of people that is headed by a councillor. It's just not done. It's never been done that I have ever saw. And I really don't think the town should be getting into loans to fix their own assets. My feeling, thank you.
Other comments, Councillor Hines?
Because this is a committee of the whole and it is discussion time, I just want to, first of all, kind of sort out this for you. This is the report that originally came to match the report that came forward from Director Hill. So this was the original, the one with the picture of the caboose on the front. That was the original one that came. And I only asked that be reproduced for you in case you weren't able to go back and find it. And it shows the phased approach. And it also shows the lead testing that was done. So that was the very first one. Actually, the very first one was Director Hill's report that appeared on the agenda to that. Then this report was written. From that, you're very right. It was aligned in the budget at $30,000. And at budget time, we decided, or I believe it was last year, we decided to reduce that down to $5,000 just for odds and sods that we might be doing. The lead testing was done at the cost to the committee and not the town, although the town did test that and we had the same results. So that's, that's fine and dandy. The second report was my speaking notes that you got last week, and that's dated June the 14th. And that is in regard to how we might move forward with this. And I will go back and say that when we had this original report, what was put on the agenda was that we needed to produce the insurance certificate. And also that, at that time, we had a proposal from a local businessman to do it, and that didn't pan out. And so we very quickly got four estimates. Now, as far as the estimates compared to Director Hill's report, in all fairness to him, one of the, one of the estimates does equal the lowest amount that he quoted, the, our highest estimate that we received. But I believe that was a range that he provided. Now, I'm not speaking for him, but that's what I understood at the time, that 600 and whatever it was, just a second here. Yikes. Just give me a sec. Where is that? Six, uh... I'm sure you people have read this report, so you know where that is. Okay, thank you. So it ranges from 90-some to 627, $627,000. So that's a big, big range. And that's the first thing that twigged us to just like, okay, how can we, if there's lead in it, then how can we deal with this? And then thus came the report. So the estimates that we got, and I, I have shared those with you in this report. And the Elite Environmental folks are the ones that are the lowest quote and have provided us with the insurance, although we have not signed on with them or anything. And they provided the $36,000 would be the max amount of a quote to do that. And they, if you go on their website, and I did print that off for everybody here, if you care to have a copy of it to look at it, they do asbestos abatement, mold remediation, lead abatement, additional, you know, removal of hazardous materials from buildings and, and facilities. So, I mean, they're in the business of doing that. They were good enough to provide that insurance certificate that, and that was a very good direction that came from you at the last meeting, to provide that, that that's something that was a bit of a stumbling block. That is their personal insurance, so to speak. And, but they, I explained that, you know, we needed it to be able to make a decision on this. So that's where that, that came from, to go along with that. So I will say that I have spoke with Councillor Jamison. We had a, an excellent discussion. And from our various council meetings, she did take the time to put together, you know, some kind of an option of how we might save the caboose, so to speak. And we did have a very good chat about it. I think the main thing is that the caboose is, is similar to any other asset that we have, whether it's the town office, the water tower, or, or one of our electronic signs. Everything is somewhat of a liability whenever it becomes outdated and whatever. But you have a group before you that is interested in restoring that and have a plan in place that, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, that I too will get old and maybe not be able to be part of that committee. But we're hoping to generate, you know, as any group does, to go forward and look after it for years to come. And I guess when that happens, then this would be the, the topic back on the table. So we have been able to secure some money. And I say secured in that folks have come forward and offered to be a part of that. Through Art Jamison, we hope to do, and he has committed to doing some fundraising, and he saw no problem with that amount of money, of trying to raise that amount of money, to at least get it, the lead off of it, and get it painted. As far as accessibility, and if you go back to my original report and what I said here, is that that's like phase four down the road, what we might do with accessibility. And I know that is an obligation to the town. But if there's nothing there inside to see or for anyone else to see, then there is no issue at this time with accessibility. And I did have an opportunity to speak to our new CAO who has, you know, and I've spoke to Kim before, our clerk, and in regard to accessibility. And if there's something in there to see, then yes, you need to provide accessibility. If there's nothing in there to see at the moment, then accessibility is not, nobody's going in there. It's like wanting to see in a closet, basically. Not that that's going to be a closet. But phase one would be, you know, to sort out the lead. So we did that, there's lead. Sort out how we can get this painted. So we had a proposal, didn't work out. So we got some estimates. We have an estimate that is appropriate. We have the insurance to go with it. And as far as the $30,000, that would be so that we could get on with signing the contract. We didn't go ahead and, and collect any of the money that has been committed. We've had several calls about, when are you going to get on with this? I want to give you the money. But we didn't want to be in the position of having to return it as we did with the pool and when we were on to that project. So that money is not collected, but we could certainly collect that tomorrow. And I think that it was Reeve Eamon that asked that we provide some type of a, some type of a financial statement. And that would be no problem once we, you know, collect that money and, and it would be in the care of the town so that, because the town would be writing the bills for, are writing the checks for the bills, which is $36,000. The other part of that is, this is similar, and where we came to that, I did have a discussion with Reeve Eamon in regard to, similar to what the library did in regard to getting the design for the new, however they're going to look after the program center. And where they wanted to borrow the money and, or spot the money so that that bill could be paid and then the money would be put back. And that's exactly the intent of the fundraising, is that that money would go to pay for that and the town would be paying those bills. So I don't know. I hope that just somewhat answers some of those little missing pieces. And, yeah, I don't, I mean, we have the insurance and that's what was asked. So I don't know what further we could put forward to satisfy those things. And I hear what you're saying, I really do. And I want to say that Councillor Jamison did spend her own personal time tracking information down through Smith Falls. We had actually spoke with Smith Falls and know that the town of Smith Falls owns the property and the group owns the, the train cars or whatever. Although that, they had to purchase them. I don't know if they, there was a cost there, we didn't get into that. But we just saw that as maybe not right at the moment. But, I mean, I wouldn't be throwing this report out. I'd be saying that, you know, if we can get it fixed up and, and there isn't the flavor of, of a group going forward, which I can tell you there is at the moment. They just really are sitting there waiting to see what happens tonight, that they may be able to get on with that and form some kind of a memorandum of understanding with the municipality that indeed we could move forward with getting that painted. Leaving it in the park was where it originally was put. And it is a bit of an icon. And we've talked when it comes to accessibility, as I said. If there's nothing inside to see, then there's no need for accessibility. But certainly bringing something forward similar to that they have in Brockville, where they have screens that you can use a QR code or you press on it, and there's some history of the railroad and whatever else we may be, may be able to promote on that. But the first thing is really, at this point, we've got the lead tested. We have the estimate is to get that lead paint off of there and then get it painted, look after the decking, and then go from there to see what we could, you know, work with in regard to the history of it or what else we might help out with in that park. They're very interested in that park, the group. And, you know, whether it's getting a group together to maybe help fix up the gazebo a little better, but to work with recreation or whoever's responsible for it to do that. So I hope that answers some of those questions. And I'm sorry about all these reports, but I just wanted you to have all of the information in one place so you could refer to it and not have to go back and, and find it in a box or in your, in your email or wherever it might be.
Director Hill?
Just, if I could, I'd like to point out a couple of points of clarification. I'm sorry, if I could, I'd like to point out a couple of points of clarification. The, the quotations that I received originally in May of 2021 were to completely sandblast the entire caboose, prime it and paint it. So we're not comparing apples to apples in the quotations that are provided. In reviewing the quotation from Elite, they are going to sandblast the caboose itself and the roof structure. They're not sandblasting the track portion. And they're not painting any part of the caboose. So just so that we understand that the quotes that were received in 2021, with the exception of the one that was 647,000 or what have you, it was to completely sandblast, paint, prime and paint the entire car.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Councillor Jamison?
I would like to know, Director Hill, do you have those, those numbers of the, when we actually did put the caboose out for sale? Like, did you actually, do you have those with you tonight that you could share that with us?
Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have the entire file. I did reach out when we talked about selling the, the, you know, when we looked at disposing of the caboose. I reached out to three salvage yards. And in May 2021, based on a 25-ton unit, we are looking at recouping somewhere between $3,000 and $3,500. After the debate or the discussion at council, I was approached by a local resident that did, put in writing, an offer where he was going to relocate the caboose to his property. And, and he put in writing that he would offer us $4,000 and pay for all costs to remove the caboose to his property where he was going to restore it and have it available for area residents to, to enjoy. I did look into the cost today. And as scrap metal has, has risen in price, we would be able to secure upwards to $4,800 for scrap and have the, it's, it's $160 a ton now where it wasn't at that price last year. So, you know, we're looking at a, you know, able to recoup costs of somewhere between $4,000 and $5,000 if we were to dispose of the, of the caboose.
Okay, Councillor Hines?
Your Worship and Council, I, I guess we're winding ourselves back to 2021 when we were trying to decide to relocate, refurbish, or dispose of the caboose. And I think at that time, we got to the point where, all right, find, we know that there's lead in the paint, that's where it came to, and that it needs to be removed. And that indeed, that, you know, the location of the caboose with the group is that it remain in that park. the location of the caboose with the group is that it remain in that park. And how can we have it remain there? Because the whole issue started with the disrepair of it. For lack of a better way of saying it, as counselor, or as Director Hill pointed out, no counsel gave him direction to look after the refurbishment of that. And that's what he was looking for, some direction on what to do with it. At that point, we were, the group was, okay, let's move forward and let's, the motion basically was that, and this is back in August 17th, 2021, that council support the refurbishment of the caboose as it's at its present location. And that the $5,000 be left in the 2021 budget, which we've already kind of dealt with that and it's out of there now. So fine and dandy. We just have to come up with another $5,000 and the town would not be on the hook for that. And further, that approval be contingent on the town receiving acceptable proof of insurance indemnity. And that's what we've provided to Kim today, to the clerk today and, or the insurance yesterday, actually. And he's able to research with our insurance that indeed that, that's everything that we need and the town is, is protected against that. I would take that that's a bit of a personal document to that company. But honestly, as council members, if you want to see it, I don't think that would be an issue. I don't think it's a public document and the clerk may able, may be able to address that. I don't think it's a public document until such time as we sign a, a contract with them. But having said that, I don't think we're back to seeing how much we might be able to get for it other than it does somewhat fit in with Counselor Jamison's report. And I know that in our, in our discussion that she and I had, that she really was trying to find a way that we could maintain the caboose or keep the caboose. And although we had maybe a difference of opinion about where it might be located, but I mean, that's kind of where we left it. So I'm not sure how we move from here when things have been provided. And as far as painting it, if you look in the very first report in regard to the phasing in of how to do this, we did get a quote for the paint and such of the supplies that we require, $3,020 at the time. And that was with volunteers painting it. And I mean, if council feels more secure with a company doing it, then maybe we could get those quotes and see. At some point, we have to embrace a community group coming forward and wanting to look after something of the town of Renfrew. And I'm sure you've heard from enough people, as Counselor Kula said, that really, let's just get on with it. It's, we've beat this to death. So it's time to just move along and, you know, embrace what the group wants to do. And if it's not kosher with the council of the day for volunteers to do it under volunteer policy, then, you know, we're willing to work with whatever manager we're assigned to and, you know, sort out what we might do.
Okay. Counselor Jamison?
So I can appreciate everything that you're talking about, that you're speaking about with your group. And I told you that when we met. But again, the more I think about it, I mean, I look back to how Smith Falls has done it. And like, yes, they have three cabooses, but none of them are owned by Smith Falls. They're owned by individuals. So that's why I am more passionate about us selling it to either a group of people, such as your group, or whether it's this individual who has plans and wants to be able to move it to their, to their property. Depending on where that property end, it could be a win-win situation for everybody. And your group could actually be working with the new owner of the caboose if we were to sell it to somebody else. And I mean, that's how Smith Falls makes it work. So it's, yes, I mean, I remember being inside that caboose. And, and I remember when you started the committee way back in the day and the R I C, there was a chamber member, which was me, a B I A member, which was Rick Lewis and Tammy Logan. We all worked together on that caboose and we had some pretty cool stuff going on inside there. You know, we had like a video, we had like, I borrowed a mannequin from Doug Fraser. We had him dressed up as a conductor. So it was really cool. So when, I would be more interested in actually speaking with this individual who was interested in purchasing it, purchasing it back in, like a couple of years ago and see if they're still interested. And if where they're going to move it to is, is close to the town of Renfrew or on town of Renfrew or, or in Renfrew or just outside of neighboring Renfrew, Horton or whatever, or Admaston. If they were going to do something cool with it, like Smith Falls is doing it with it, like they, they rent out their cabooses for accommodations and people actually stay in there and sleep there, you know, they come from all over. I mean, when I checked out their website, there's people from all over Europe and Africa coming to sleep in a caboose because they thought it was cool. I think we could do something really great without it being a cost to the town of Renfrew, period. So, and your group, maybe you guys, maybe your group should be the ones buying the caboose. It's not going to go for a ton of money. So I'm still, I still would like to see, I'm still more interested in selling it. Like I said, I don't want to get rid of, I don't want to turf the caboose like a lot of people seem to think that I do. And even myself, I've been, I've been out doing business for Bluegrass and I've been challenged on why do you, why do you want to get rid of the caboose? Like, what's the big deal with it? When I tell them that it's never going to be accessible, then they're like, well, why would we keep it? So again, I, I can't say, I totally respect everything that you're doing and your group's doing. And I think there is value there and I think we just need to, I think this could work. Your group could work with the new owner and I think it would be a success for everybody.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I'll go to Counselor Sidney first.
Okay. Sorry, sorry.
So I'll be honest, I'm on the fence right at the moment. I respect everybody's hard work with Counselor Jamison and Counselor Heinz. A few things kind of set off some alarm bells. And I, I think if we really look at this from a overall historical piece to the town, you know, I just want to draw attention to the fact that we had two train stations that the council at the time decided to tear down. So there wasn't a significant history in that. But I think if, if, if we were to move forward with any type of restoration of the caboose, I think it has to be done by the municipality. I think the group is great that they support it. But I think it has, it's a municipal owned property. And I think to do, to do it, we, we would need to be that care and control of it. You know, and, and I think it's, I think there's a lot of personal feelings towards this caboose and there's a lot of passion and stuff like that. But if we look at the history of it, we have no train tracks anymore in the town of Renfrew, other than the ones that the crews are sitting on. So they were torn out. We don't have a train station. So the only thing that I could see is if the town or a committee or whoever, whatever, thinks outside the box a little bit, I could be somewhat supportive of the idea of it gets painted white with M J O'Brien's black silhouette on it with a nice framed plaque describing the importance of how that went. That's the only, like, people are like, hey, you got a caboose, but you got no tracks, you got no station. Why do you have a caboose? You know, and I, I think that's, I think it's, it's an important issue. But the biggest alarm that comes off right now is the 30 plus thousand dollars that it's going to take to sandblast it. Then we got to get in to find more money to paint it and more money. So it, it's not just 30 some thousand. It's going to turn into 50, 60. So I think it's, it's somewhere in, in that area. So, you know, with being realistic, it's, it could become a financial liability. And, and I don't think it's up to a, I don't want to set precedence with a certain group because then we'll have other groups come into us saying, you know, well, can we borrow $30,000 to paint the curling club? Can we, you know, like, we're going to set a precedence here. And I think that, to use the comparison with the library, the library is actually a department of the town. So it, it's not, it's not an outside group. You know, so I, I, there's, there's a lot of concern. I appreciate the, the passion that people have for it. But at the end of the day, not one council group, from the minute it was put on the rails there, put any plan in place to keep it in check. And now we're sitting here. So it, it's a tough call because I, I, I see there is some significance. There's some historical significance if it's marketed properly. But at the end of the day, the financial contribution to fix this, I think is going to turn into a lot more than just what we think it is. And I think that, that concerns me a little bit. But I appreciate the, the hard work that everybody's done. I appreciate the group for their passion and their commitment. But at the end of the day, we've got to make a decision that's in the best interest of all of Renfrew. And if it's, the caboose is the best interest to keep it there, then it should be a municipality thing and we should do it right and spend the money and do it, which is going to cost a lot. So that's kind of where I'm at. I, I, I don't really know where this is going to go on my brain because it's, I see both sides, but it's the financial part that I think we're going to get a little stuck on. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Heinz?
All right. Just in regard to the purchaser of the caboose that has shown some interest, I did also speak with him. And actually, he would be prepared to move it to his property that's in Horton. And he has some ideas about what he wants to create there. So that's not going to be in the town of Renfrew. And just to, not to belabor the point, but Counselor Sidney, when that caboose was moved there and there was some repairs done on it, there was a plan in place to have some money in the budget to do repair and maintenance. And it has been painted previously. And I mean, that was why there was a line in the budget, so to speak. And, and not to, to say that recreation did not want to take care of it. The councils of the day didn't see fit to, that that's what they, where they wanted to spend money. So, I mean, there was a plan in place, but yeah, things change with different, with different councils. And, you know, as far as having it as a town project, that's the reason why the funding and the bills would all come through the town and, and the group would have to work with recreation. Or I know that Director Hill is very busy with Madaway at this time and trying to get that back on track after the construction site and the mega, mega rain that we get. But whoever, perhaps the new C A O would, you know, kind of monitor that or guide that. It's still, the town or the group is still, or they're not looking to kind of scoop it up on the town because we looked after fundraising to take the lead paint off it or to paint it. We're looking to assist the town. And this is similar to the rink or anything else where groups come forward with their funding to support whatever project is going forward. We don't necessarily have that when it comes to the, the water tower or that kind of thing. But this is a different entity. It is somewhat of a facility. And honestly, the, when it comes to accessibility, I mean, we need to get it, the rust off it because people are tired of looking at that, as Counselor Kula said. And, you know, get it, the, but the lead paint off of it, get it painted and then kind of go to the next, which is phase three, the next step of what we might do with it. Like what are we, you know, is there a way that we can have some accessibility, you know? But I just, there's, you know, if we think outside the box, maybe there is a way. But right now, coming back to this project that we first put forward and was received on August 17th, 2021, he asked for the insurance. We provided it. And now I'm just not sure what is the next hoop to jump through for this group to come forward. And as I said, I wouldn't be throwing this report away that Counselor Jamison gave us because I think that indeed that has some validity down the road. And when we go to deal with accessibility, is there something in there to see? Or how do we make what we want to know about the railway or history of Renfrew or whatever we want to promote there, how do we make that accessible? And whether it's a screen outside or a little kiosk or U R, Q R code or, you know, whether we do find a way that we can get inside it and use the inside of it to, to look at, to be through. But, you know, we're going to have to change it so much, it wouldn't be like the same as a railcar. So maybe we need to have that, you know, so people can see what it was like. Visual is, is almost as good as being in there and looking at it. So I just, I just see this group as just wanting to move forward, to work with the town, to provide, I mean, if we didn't go ahead with fundraising because we didn't want to raise all the money and then have to figure out a way to return it if council said no. So, but we're very much ready to go with that if council gives us the go-ahead. And it's not like you're going to give us $30,000 that we're going to keep in our bank account. Or we don't have a bank account or our back pocket until we can pay the bills. Because all of that, the contract and all of that would have to go through the town like any other repair and maintenance. We just want to put the funds towards paying for that. So enough said, I think, for me.
Okay. I had my two cents here. I did get a call this morning from the gentleman mentioned about fundraising. And he's certainly indeed more than willing to do what he has to do to raise it. He asked me for an amount and I gave him an amount for exceeding $30,000. He did not see that as a problem whatsoever. And anyway, he says he's just sort of anxious to get on to it and asked me if I would get back to him with, with whatever's going on. So that's something I will do. He also asked me this morning for Reeve Emo's number. And I give it to him and I'm not sure if he contacted you or not. But I don't think, I have no problem, I have no problem whatsoever with the $30,000 loan, personally, myself. Okay. Counselor Evans and Counselor Kulis?
Thank you. I'd be at a miss if I didn't mention, in my first term of council, most of the people that's sitting at the table were not here. There was a rookie councillor, his name was Jim Miller. And he proposed to the council at that time that he would initiate an N H L, N H A museum. Well, he was pretty much mocked by almost each and every councillor, probably including the mayor at the time, because of this dream that Jim had and the vision of having a, well, almost a legacy type product here in the town. It took Jim almost three years to actually get it rolling reluctantly by, again, by members of the council. But they adopted it and it finally gave Jim the place on the second floor of the former post office building. And yes, the town actually did reimburse Jim for his out-of-pocket expenses. With Jim's vision, as I see through Sandy and her group of people, they're trying to maintain a flagpole, if you would, or something that the, the community can, can rally around. And this is really important to, to obviously the members of their community, but to others and aspiring groups that might wish to do something. These people are saying, we understand that it might be a burden for the taxpayers of the Renfrew. So they'll take some of this off their, off the taxpayer's hands and take these efforts on themselves. Sandy's also put an awful lot of effort here in putting herself out with reports and, and an awful lot of work. It seems to be an uphill battle as I used to watch Jim present to council almost on a... a annual basis, uh, for his NHL, NHA museum, which I'm happy is still here today, although it has been moved. It, it suffered the same challenges. Accessibility, thank you, was a big one for, uh, the post office museum, it didn't have it. Uh, the, the NHL, NHA museum did come up with, uh, workarounds. One was a small lift that they'd purchased. Uh, and then the second one was, uh, contamination asbestos. And that was evident in some of the building materials that were taken out of, uh, the renovation or restoration of the second floor. So with the dream and with a bunch of people behind with support, um, I too am, I'm, I'm believing that this is something that we can do. It's obviously very important to, uh, to many people here already in the town, as we've heard already. And, uh, if we're willing to, or if we're able to have, um, members of the community that are, will financially support or help prop it up, I totally support their idea and their venture. Thank you.
Counselor Kulis.
Thank you. I have to congratulate you, Counselor Hines, because, um, I can see where this is going tonight. Uh, you've done a lot of work and, um, I'm not, I'm not convinced it's the best move for the town of Rent Row, but I feel the council is going to grant you your wish. I hearken back to last fall when two of your community, your community group members went out and restored, uh, Big Joe Muffet without any permission in the town of Rent Row. Very bad move, of course, but that's, those are the kind of movements that trouble me a lot when you get the same group of people who want to paint this caboose. It's just a, it's a recipe that's going to cost us money for years to come. Thirty thousand dollars will, as Counselor Sidney said, will turn into forty and forty-five and may stop there and then it'll be ten thousand the year later for whatever needs to be refurbished on it then. It's still going to be a very expensive, um, non, non-necessary asset to the town. And yeah, the group is, uh, the group is very passionate. There's quite a few members of that group that are not Rent Row residents, by the way. They are very passionate about getting that done. And I hope that they stay passionate about it because in the years to come, it will need a lot of work.
Okay. Reeve Emo.
Thank you. Thank you. I have, have had a number of calls in the last six weeks or so. And there are people who are interested in, in putting money into this as a donation. They just don't want to be part of a, a political bond fight, to be quite frank. Um, and they've asked me to keep their names, uh, keep their names quiet and I'm willing to do that. And I have some confidence that they will step up. There's been, I haven't talked about any amounts, uh, just I know that they have. And Mr. Jamison did call me this morning. He and I've worked on a number of projects over the years and, and, uh, he too wanted to make sure that he wasn't going to offend anybody by, by offering his, uh, support. Uh, and then also just how, how committed was the community? Um, he wanted to, to know that I had been reached out to by others and, uh, and that he wouldn't be wasting his time. So I think, I think he's going to be a valuable asset as it moves forward. I'll be honest with you, if this project came to us as a, a blank field and to place it there, I wouldn't be in favor of it, but we do own it now and I think we have a responsibility to maintain it. And as someone pointed out, I'm not sure who it was, we have lots of assets where we, community groups contribute money to, uh, to a project as it moves forward. And I think this is it. And, and my feeling right now is that accessibility is not on the table because it, I think it's a matter of, of repainting it properly, sealing it, uh, because it's not, it's not, it's not in a position to be an accessible asset, um, at this point. So that's a, that's a phase down the road and it may not be. The, you know, the interior of it may likely end up only being storage. Because it's no, you know, having been looking in the windows and been in it a couple of years back, I, I can't see how you can make it accessible in any way, shape or form, um, short of cutting the side out of it and putting a, a flip out like a, like a food truck on it. That seems to be the only way and it doesn't make any sense to do it that way. So I, you know, I, um, I think it's an asset that we have and, uh, there is, there is assets in the ground there as well. I was told by people when they moved it that there is significant, I believe, concrete and gravel as well underneath it. So, um, remove the caboose, you have to remove some of that stuff if we do something down the road. So I, I'm at the point now where I, you know, I think in voting today on the motion, I would be voting against, um, getting rid of it. But I think we need to see a solid plan. We need to see a group that's putting their name forward as a group with a, uh, with a committee and then their fundraising plan. And I think it is a town of Rent Row asset, so it has to be managed by the town, uh, with the financial contribution from the group. So we, you know, treat it like a normal project where it's, it's given a budget. So the budget would be to strip it and then a budget to paint it. I agree with Counselor Kulis. I, as much as I, I think the volunteers are well-meaning, um, I paint poorly and I have to paint over again. And I, you know, I don't want to put that responsibility on them because, uh, they don't need to hear three years from now, you know, if, if rust pops through or a rivet comes loose, that it's because they're incompetent and I don't think that's fair to them. So I think it's, it's a town asset, it so has to be a town project, get a budget, manage it, and the group, their, uh, you know, their contribution is to raise funds towards it. That's, I think that's the only way to move forward with it, recognizing it's not accessible and the immediate plans and the immediate future plans aren't to make it accessible. I understand that the, the caboose is structurally sound. This is mostly cosmetic with some, uh, some ceiling around the doors and the windows and, and, uh, the, I'm going to call it the capola on top, I'm not sure what the proper term is. Uh, but I think that's, you know, I, I don't have the impression that there is a, a structural issue where you have to go inside and rip, rip the guts out of it and, and shore it up. So that's where I'm at with it right now. I think it, you know, it has to be maintained, we own it.
Okay. We've discussed this now for about an hour. Last comment, very last comment from anybody, then we're going to the vote.
Yeah, so, you know, when you hear all of this and, and the one thing of, of the, it's the finances that keep coming back. How much is it going to cost the town? It's going to be, you know, a sunken ship for the town. But if, you know, we're hearing from the, the mayor and the Reeve of people that are confident that they can get the finances and understand the accessibility, um, you know, jokingly, the caboose is pretty narrow, I don't even know if I would be able to go in it anyway. Um, so, you know, it's from an accessibility perspective. But, uh, you know, I, I think if, if the finances are going to be able to be reimbursed to the town, um, then I don't, I don't think there's a reason to not let the group, but I agree with Reeve Emo that it is a municipally owned, um, piece, asset and that it should be driven by the municipality with support and financial contributions from the group, for sure. Thanks.
Okay. We have a mover and a seconder now. We're going to call for the vote.
Yes, absolutely.
Just to have a clarification, are we voting on the motion that you originally read?
I'll read it one more time.
To get rid of it?
I'll read it one more time to you.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The Rent Row Town Council deemed the caboose located at O'Brien Road and Mask Road intersection to be surplus to the needs of the municipality, dispensed in a safe and reasonable manner following a receipt and the evaluation of offers from the community. So I gather if you vote in favor of this, we'll be getting rid of the caboose. If you vote against it, we'll be not getting rid of it. And go to the next part of it.
Okay, if you're ready, I'll read the recorded, or the vision vote for that motion just read. Reeve Emo?
Opposed.
Counselor Kulis?
In favor.
Counselor Evans?
Opposed.
Counselor Hines?
Opposed.
Counselor Jamison?
In favor.
Counselor Sidney?
Opposed.
Mayor Edie?
And I'm opposed.
Motion is lost.
Okay. So the next motion being then, the Rent Row Town Council approved the caboose restoration group to proceed with the removal of the lead paint on the caboose using a contracted professional company under the supervision of town staff. Furthermore, the Rent Row, the Town of Rent Row Council authorized staff to engage in negotiations to loan the group up to thirty thousand dollars for the project upon receipt of a detailed accounting of funds accumulated to date and plans of retiring, retiring of that debt. Uh, mover please. Counselor Hines, second by.
I, with amendments, I really appreciate the input that Reeve Emo, it objected that with, with the town sort of taking the lead. If it would be probably brought back, we would. It indulges the council with that.
Are you seconding the motion?
This motion is just to remove the paint.
It's to turn it over to the community.
Just to remove the paint.
Just to remove the paint. Not to repaint it, remove the paint.
Your worship, could you read that one more time?
The Rent Row Town Council approved the caboose restoration group to proceed with the removal of the lead paint on the caboose using a contracted professional company under the supervision of town staff. Furthermore, the Rent Row Town Council authorized staff to engage in negotiation to the, law, uh, negotiations to loan the group up to thirty thousand dollars for the project upon receipt of a detailed accounting of funds accumulated to date and plans of retiring that debt. We have a mover and we have a seconder. Now we'll turn it over to the discussion.
Your worship, if I could just say, if we could go back to August seventeenth where it said the council supports the refurbishment of the caboose at its present location, I think that's an important point. And, um, the other part of it, to work with town staff, uh, to provide the budget and whatever, now that we've been, we've provided the insurance for that company and to work with engaging this company, company to do it. I think it kind of says that in the body of it, but I, I, I don't think that the group is saying, turn it over to us to paint it and, uh, take the lead off. I think it's more saying that council supports the refurbishment or some of council report, re, uh, supports the refurbishment of the caboose at its present location. I think that's point number one. And then to work with town staff, we would have to ensure that this is the company that we hire and that, um, the funds, we need to provide, um, a plan of the funds that we have now and how we're going to repay that amount if we even need to borrow it, how fast we can raise that money.
Okay, Reeve Emo.
Could I, I, I'm not sure there's any speed to have, to have this done tonight and we do meet next Tuesday night. So it might be advisable to, to, um, table this motion, as much as I hate the thought, but to get the correct motion because I think, you know, the staff have heard our, you know, our conversation and, and the general outlines, but I think this is such a, an interesting project that I, you know, I hope we would get it right with the motion and to make sure we've got clear intent, uh, you know, about timelines and budget and town staff managing it, accessibility. Like, there's several points that, you know, I hope, and in fairness to Clerk Ballmer, I'm not sure, you know, it, you know, he's going to be able to capture it all in one, in one swoop. So I, I, you know, I, I don't know that seven days is going to matter with this project.
First of all, this committee cannot make a decision, has to go to council. I'm like, right.
There you go. Perfect.
I guess ideally, we, you know, as we need it as committee of the whole, it's not a traditional committee of the whole, it is more the, of a special council. But certainly I think, uh, comments are well taken and it may, it may benefit to, to have a, a motion that's more closely aligned with the comments heard if we did have time to, uh, to prepare and to engage with, uh, with Counselor Hines, uh, who is the mover of the motion and to ensure that, and with the comments that have been made to ensure that it's, uh, more adequately reflects, you know, the intent that was discussed tonight. So I certainly would support it to also, um, be in move to next week so we can ensure that we, we, we get that.
Okay, Counselor Hines.
Things. So that's a notice of motion that's coming forward to our council meeting. The previous motion has already been addressed, so we're not going to be, I don't need more speaking notes for all you to read, certainly not. I heard Counselor Kulis say that. Anyway, um, so this is a notice of motion to move forward and I just think it, as Reeve Emo said, it needs to be clear that the group isn't taking an over. I mean, it'll be the town that says, yes, Elite is the one and we have their insurance, we're satisfied with that. And then here's the plan for the group and, uh, in regard to providing the funds and then, but the, there is a little bit of urgency in that because we do need to get on with painting it before it becomes November. And the second thing is that we would like to start that fundraising to ensure that council sees and, and give you a regular report, you know, we're at five thousand, we're at ten thousand, we're at whatever and how much we're able to, to raise to do that. And I have no problem with the idea of, of painting it and that'll be our next kind of venture to see what kind of costs we're talking about if, if you're not happy with volunteers doing it. And, and I totally understand that until we get some kind of a specific volunteer policy about what we want people volunteering to do.
So Reeve Emo put a, a suggestion on the table, don't make that as a motion to table it till, I need a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Hines. Any further comments on that? Okay, none in favor? Okay. Thoughts carried. So it's table till, uh, like a regular council meeting. Okay, we're nothing for Kulis' session, any new or unfinished business? Hearing nothing? Okay, we do now adjourn at seven oh five.